Well, we're online here. I'd like to welcome everybody here. If you would join me in making the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. I know I'm not on mic yet, so I'll get there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I could tell everybody, "One nation under God," that's a complete god. Everybody usually hesitates there, so I'm sorry if I... That seems like Russian, but it's not really.
There's supposed to be a pause.
No, there's not. Sorry. That's not... In my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have the agenda here. Are there any agenda amendments that either of you have? I guess I should introduce everybody. This is Commissioner Huxley on my left. To my right is Commissioner Boyce. Then we have Council Huddle and John Jesuit, our administrative assistant. And it's Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. Actually, 10:01. We have to be exact. So, May 9th. He's our person to keep me right on task here. Okay. So are there any agenda amendments?
None, Chair.
None from me, Madam Chair.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Chair, I'll motion to adopt the agenda as shown.
I'll second.
Call for a question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we're going to start with the Department of Forestry. I think we've been introduced to everybody, but if you'd introduce yourselves as you go up, that would be great.
Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. Chair Gold and Commissioner Huxley and Commissioner Boyce and the rest of your staff, very pleased to be with you here today. I'm Dave Lorenz. I work for the Oregon Department of Forestry. Phil Chang is also with me, as well as Link Smith. I might just touch base quickly about kind of who we are and kind of what our roles and responsibilities are. I'm our Southern Oregon area director, which means I'm kind of responsible for our field operations from Lynn and Lane County, south of the California border. Link is our district forester. He's our Western Lane district forester, which due to some reorganizational efforts, which we can talk about probably after this, if you're interested, now includes some of the work down that we do down in the Curry County area. Although CFPA is still responsible for fire protection in this area, that hasn't changed. And Phil is our Federal Forest Restoration Coordinator in Salem, in our Salem office. And we're really pleased to be here with you today to talk about the potential... Talk about Good Neighbor Authority and the potential to be able to use that on the Chetco Bar Fire. We're interested in potentially implementing a timber sale on the Chetco Bar Fire through the Good Neighbor Authority because we think our added capacity brings an opportunity to be able to salvage more timber off of the fire itself at the time when the wood is solid and good and still marketable, then the Forest Service would be able to harvest if our additional capacity and staffing weren't available to that. If we do implement a salvage sale through Good Neighbor on the Chetco Bar, we believe that it will bring more timber to the local industry, potentially bring more jobs to the community. It'll remove some forest fuels, some of the snags from the roadways, minimize the risk to the public, and it will also generate some income, some program income, that can be utilized for projects such as reforestation on the Forest Service lands themselves. So there's a lot of opportunity there, we believe. And Phil is kind of our expert on the subject, and he's... I'm going to pass it off to him now to talk more specifically about Good Neighbor and what that is.
Thanks, Dave, and thank you for having us here today, Commissioners. As Dave said, my name is Phil Chang. I'm the Federal Forest Restoration Program Lead for ODF from... I mean, in here from the Salem office. I thought we would start by just providing a little bit of context on why ODF is talking about getting involved in management of national forest land, federal forest land, the state. Why is the state here to talk about federal forest management? The state has a federal forest restoration program, which was initiated in 2013. At the time... Sorry. My page is out of order here. At the time of... In 2012, there was a body called the Federal Forest Advisory Committee, and that group made a recommendation to both the governor and the state legislature to create a federal forest restoration program. Their reasons for this were numerous, but the key ones were that there's a whole lot of acres, millions of acres of federal forest land in the state of Oregon in need of restoration that are performing suboptimally. They're not producing... They're not growing trees as fast as they could. They are at higher risk of wildfire, et cetera. So there's a lot of land in need of restoration, and what the Federal Forest Advisory Committee noted was that the federal government's capacity to manage those lands was flat to declining at that point in time. So if we wanted to see better outcomes from those federal forest lands inside the state's boundaries, we should help. They also noted that there was this really exciting collaborative movement that was taking hold, particularly in eastern Oregon, that was helping to create much more social agreement and reducing conflicts about federal forest management, allowing active restoration to go forward. And they also noted that the governor at the time commissioned... Governor Kitzhaber commissioned us a really interesting study called the Forest Restoration Economic Assessment, which demonstrated that money spent, you know, in that case by the federal government on federal forest restoration, generated tremendous numbers of jobs in rural communities in eastern Oregon. So the governor proposed and the legislature approved a program that has now been funded for three bienniums. And this slide shows some of the things that the funds are invested in. For this particular biennium, 2017 to 19, there is $3 million being invested in the top two blue bars on this diagram. So we are directly... The state is helping to accelerate the pace and scale of restoration on federal forest lands by providing support both directly as grants and indirectly through technical assistance to forest collaboratives around the state, helping them, again, produce that public agreement that lets forest management move forward. And then also by providing support to the federal agencies themselves when they face some key bottlenecks, particularly in the NEPA process, the NEPA planning process, and also when they finish planning a project but they haven't had a chance to implement yet, which is where they generate some of the revenue that then allows them to do their operations. There's sort of a valley of death between planning and implementation where a lot of prep and layout work needs to happen. So we can also help to make projects move faster by, for example, bringing seasonal firefighters out in, you know, on the shoulder of their season to help lay out harvest units and things like that. So the third bar down here is focused on the Good Neighbor Authority. There's two kinds of Good Neighbor Authority projects, restoration services and timber sales, which I'll talk about in a moment. But the basic idea here is that the Good Neighbor Authority allows the state of Oregon to expand its role in federal forest management, particularly in the implementation stages. So in 2014, Congress gave all 50 states what's called Good Neighbor Authority. And basically, this allows partnerships between the Forest Service, or BLM, and the state to accomplish restoration work on federal land. So the state actually makes... Or the federal government actually makes the state their agent and enables them to implement work on federal land. So this is new. You are probably very familiar with the state doing work on state land or the state helping private landowners, but now, under Good Neighbor Authority, we are allowed to work with the federal government and do work on federal lands. This picture is of the governor and the regional forester and the state forester and the director of ODF and W signing the master Good Neighbor Authority agreement for the state of Oregon back in 2016. Here's just a list, a couple of examples. This is not an exhaustive list, but a couple of examples of the kinds of projects that can be implemented under Good Neighbor Authority. Finning projects for hazardous fuels reduction or forest health, culvert replacement, you know, fish habitat projects, invasive species, not just weed treatment. So all kinds of implementation can be done on federal forest lands.
Who pays for all of this? Is it state or federal?
That's a good question. Under Good Neighbor Authority... So I had mentioned we have the Federal Forest Restoration Program in which the state has been making investments in federal lands. Under Good Neighbor Authority, basically, the federal government is providing resources, sometimes in the form of funds, sometimes in the form of timber, which can be converted to funds, for the state to do work. So, you know, the federal government gains extra capacity from the state workforce, and the state gets funding to cover those costs. So, yeah, many of these kinds of... Well, yeah. So these kinds of projects can be paid for either out of timber value or out of federal funds, appropriate dollars, KV money, other things. So besides implementation, there's a number of things that we can... Other things we can do under Good Neighbor Authority. We can do that kind of site prep layout work using federal funds. We can do NEPA support work, you know, surveys, stand exams, even, you know, some of the analysis and drafting of NEPA that they need done. And we can do pre- and post-implementation monitoring for the Forest Service or the BLM.
Want to ask you one more question?
Yeah.
One of the reasons we're having these huge fires is because of the amount of ground fuel that we've got. Are you working very diligently on that issue or...?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, a big part of the reason that the Federal Forest Restoration Program was established within the state was an interest in doing fuels reduction work to, you know, reduce the severity of fires in the future, severity and extent of fires, particularly since oftentimes fires burn off of federal lands into other places. So...
Because I'm more concerned that we're proactive rather than reactive with all of this, and I think that's been one of the big problems.
Yeah. Fuels reduction is a really strategic place to look. I mean, you can have all the firefighters and all of the equipment and the air support available, but if you could get ahead of the fire and, you know, reduce fuels, then there are oftentimes when... It makes those fires much easier to manage and helps us actually conserve our firefighting resources. Okay. So here's the two kinds of agreements that can be done under Good Neighbor Authority to do projects. So there's restoration services agreements and program income or timber agreements. Under a restoration services agreement, basically, the federal government is, again, giving us funds to do work for them. Under a program income timber agreement, ODF administers a timber sale on federal land and collects the receipt, collects the, you know, the sale revenue from that timber sale, uses that to cover our costs, and then accomplish additional restoration work on the federal lands. So, yeah. That's basically what...
Mr. Chang.
Yes.
And the last paragraph there, that is, very little money then comes back to the county, if any, correct, on that process?
Yes. Under a Good Neighbor... And we want to get into that in a little bit more depth in a couple of slides, but this is... Under a Good Neighbor Authority timber sale, basically, you capture a lot of the value of the wood to be reinvested back into the land to do things like reforestation or watershed restoration, and you don't capture nearly as much to be given to the county in the form of receipts. And because of that, that's part of the reason we wanted to come in and discuss this topic with you today, because basically, as Dave said, we want to make the case that the sales that we are talking about participating in essentially would not happen unless they were done under Good Neighbor Authority and the federal government was able to tap the capacity of ODF. So it's... So basically, the kind of the argument is if you're not getting receipts off of wood that wouldn't have been harvested anyway without ODF's help, then it's not necessarily a loss of county receipts. So these are, you know, we're talking about volume that will be harvested in addition to anything that the federal government was able to harvest with their existing capacity. So a sale that could not happen without ODF doing it under Good Neighbor Authority.
That is some consolation, yeah. Definitely.
Yeah. And so the benefit to the county then is not in the form of receipts, but you still get the acres treated, the fuels reduced, the dangerous snags eliminated.
Employment, you mentioned.
The volume to the mill and the jobs, so...
So it's more indirect rather than direct, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Get to the bottom line.
Definitely. Okay. So there's a... When the state does a Good Neighbor Authority timber sale, there are these sideboards around it. The program income is held for the Forest Service in account for restoration work within the forest. The county receipts are received only on the minimum prized value of the wood. So we send a small amount of money to the Forest Service at the time of the sale, and then the county would get 25% of that. But it is not like... It's not like 25% on the full receipts of the sale. Under Good Neighbor Authority timber sale, we are not allowed to do vegetation removal in wilderness, wilderness study areas, or other areas where vegetation removal is prohibited. And next point, very importantly, the Forest Service still maintains the NEPA decision responsibility, so they are still planning the projects, and they're providing us the prescriptions and marking guidelines for those projects. We can help. We can provide them data. We can provide them all sorts of information that helps inform their planning process, but ultimately, they have the decision authority on what project will be implemented. Finally, there's... There was a restriction on road construction or reconstruction within Good Neighbor Authority projects. That has been slightly relaxed in this most recent session of Congress. So now, when road construction or reconstruction is necessary to do restoration under a Good Neighbor Authority project, the state is allowed to do that. So even before the Chetco Bar Fire was out, the state was trying to think about what they could do to help with post-fire recovery and lessening the impacts or buffering the community from the impacts of the fire. And here's some pictures of a field trip we did in late February out to the Chetco Bar Fire. That's Dave in the blue shirt.
In the blue shirt.
And a Forest Service timber manager and another one of our staff, Chris Rudd, from ODF, here. We think that the best opportunity to help would be to do a little bit of the salvage that's going to be done on the Chetco Bar Fire under Good Neighbor Authority. And again, the benefits are the additional timber volume, employment, acres treated, and plus getting people in to access this area.
Just one question. Are you going to limit the people that do the salvage to local people so they could have the jobs? Because I think that's a big deal here. At least we could benefit indirectly.
Yes. We... I do not believe that under our state timber sale contracting authority, we can restrict who gets the sale.
Okay. It's just by bid, and anybody can bid?
Yeah.
Okay.
That said, we have been in close contact with local industry and local contractors to determine, you know, because part of the risk assessment for ODF is, you know, could we actually get this material prepped up fast enough that it still has value when it gets harvested? So we've been in close contact with local industry and local contractors.
Just to let them know that the contracts are available and...
Yeah.
Get out there and do it if they want.
They've expressed keen interest, and because we offer this federal timber using the state timber sale contracting process, it actually... The terms of the state timber sale contract are actually, in a number of ways, more favorable or easier for timber purchasers. So they have... A lot of them have said, you know, "Same timber. If you guys are selling it, we would actually be more interested in buying it and probably bid a higher price."
Council Huddle, you had a comment?
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm not familiar with the procurement rules that the state would use to do a timber sale, but in general, a lot of times when you have a project, a lot of the... The farther a contractor has to come from...
Costs more.
Yep. So even if you're... And a lot of times, you're not going solely on low bid, but a lot of times, just as a factor of distance and being close, the local contractors, following all the rules, not by any kind of local saying, "We have to restrict to local," it just sometimes works out that way number-wise. So sorry about that, but I just wanted to kind of...
Oh, that's okay. I'm just trying to protect the citizens and make sure the money stays here.
We would very much...
All possible.
We would anticipate that most of the wood would end up at South Coast.
Okay. Well, they're the biggest game in town, so to speak.
Okay. So we covered a bunch of this already, but, you know, how would a GNA timber sale work in the Chetco Bar salvage area? We would prepare and administer the sale, that the Forest Service would otherwise not get to. The timber value would be captured, hopefully, before the wood decomposes too much, and then we would use those funds to implement additional restoration work and recoup our costs for administering... Prepping and administering the sale. There would not be... There would be minimal receipts to the county, but this would be a sale unit that would not happen without Good Neighbor Authority. So it's, again, it's lost opportunity on something that wouldn't have happened. And finally, the program income would be used for post-fire... A variety of post-fire recovery work. We met with the Wild Rivers Coast Forest Collaborative a few weeks back, and they said that they were really interested in seeing reforestation, watershed and stream restoration, you know, some things that would benefit fish, and fuels reduction. And one of the nice things about this, again, is that if you do a GNA timber sale, you generate program income. It can be used... It should be used, you know, first and foremost to make, you know, to fix the area where that the harvest happens. But then, any program income that is still available after that, in addition to that, can be used in other parts of the Rogue Siskiyou National Forest. So a number of the people said, "Well, the Shasta-Agnis project is going to need to be implemented, you know, within a year or two years." And so if there was extra program income from this project, you know, from the salvage project, that would be one place you could send it, you know, to do fuels reduction around Agnes or something like that. So there's a lot of, again, the trade-off. There's not the revenue to the county, but there is the opportunity to do a lot of good work on the forest with the value that you capture from the wood. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're aware, you know, and I know this is probably... I don't want to speak for you, it would probably have been a source of frustration for you too, that the original 13,000 acres that we were hoping to harvest now is down to about 4,000, and we may be lucky to get that. Of course, there's the urgency of the whole matter. One thing that Mr. Lorenz read that I was really glad to hear is the policy of the state to pursue projects. And so, in the sense of that being plural, do we... Correct me if I'm wrong, but we just have one likely project right now that we're looking at, and it's almost under the test category? Is that fair to say?
You want to... Yeah, we'll have to go up, so just so you pick up your comments.
So there are two projects that we're considering right now. One is strictly a roadside hazard tree removal project, and one is a combination of a roadside and an area salvage that is, in addition to some roadside, includes about 350 acres. We're still... We've ramped up a little bit in terms of some staffing to be able to help us with the workload, and we've got the ability to bring on some seasonal workforce to help us with the workload. So we really want, you know, we really want to implement a project, but if it becomes more than that, if the timing is right and we can still get the wood out and still generate some income and have some, you know, good logs for the mills to saw up, we're interested in more than one if we can pull it off.
And, you know, the reality is, the only way we might get some realistic rehabilitation is from the GNA project. That might be, you know, wishful thinking, but in the overall, without the timber sales and Forest Service, I think this is definitely a really good direction. And so, you know, where I stand with the Oregon Department of Forestry being involved in this whole process and, you know, all the meetings we've had, I know it's something you're going to kind of have to grow slow and make it work, but, yeah, with those timber sales through your efforts and these projects, again, hopefully plural, that might be the only way we're going to get reforestation, you know, even in the long term. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, this, you know, as Phil was speaking, I was thinking, you know, this, the Good Neighbor, in my mind, it's an agreement between the Forest Service and us. We entered into an agreement there, but it really is a partnership too. And, you know, they bring forth the projects that are there, and, you know, we are interested in helping with those. And then, you know, Mike Robison from CFPA is not here today, but he's aware of the conversations that are happening and the... And that there will become a right time for him to get engaged here in terms of staffing, bringing a workforce, and in terms of, in my mind, longer term, if we make this work and we have some, you know, consistent projects over time, and we're talking about some salvage right now, but there could be some other opportunities and projects in terms of revenue generating, i.e., timber sale projects in future years as well, that are additive, that we might consider and hope to consider. And with that, you know, if it continues to perpetuate and we can do some longer-term planning, to me, that planning includes where we spend that project income and where, you know, if we're to do some fuels modification, put them in the right places so that they help defend communities, help defend private property, and that's where we need someone with Mike's expertise and his knowledge of the area here would be really beneficial.
He's been here almost 30 years, so, you know, you've heard me say publicly, the board has heard me say with tremendous gratitude to the Oregon Department of Forestry, I think the fire would have been way worse had you not... All your people, the Coos Forest Protector, State Fire Marshal, you know, the days and weeks you spent here, all of you, it's just... I hope we never have to go through that again, but it has to be said, and that's why I'm excited about the future of Oregon Department of Forestry, even if it's pretty limited basis initially. even if it's pretty limited basis initially, to get some of this timber out before it goes away. And just, just have to really extend to everybody in that, in your program how much of a difference that made. Which leads me to the NEPA process. I mean, I know you're on the peripheral, I know the Forest Service has a final say on that still, and of course, my personal opinion is that we would have more of a say in that as well as, as all of you. But, but on the, on kind of the background there, do you see with the emergency and the urgency we have, that the, the NEPA process being actually for this fire, post-fire conditions and the harvest we need to do, do you see it improving there? And, and I guess you could ask, you could answer that from any of the fires in the West that we have.
Do you mean specific to salvage on the fire itself, or?
The whole, the whole process, yes.
I'll be honest with you, my experience, well, my experience with NEPA is not very extensive, honestly. And, and, you know, I know where, at least I think I know where we are with things here on Chetco. And, but I don't, I don't know, you know, in terms of that process changing, if there's imminent changes that make it faster, easier, better, whatever the right adjectives are to work through. I, I don't know what's in the works there, honestly.
I can make one comment about that. Nationally, the, the Forest Service is running a process called environmental, a whole kind of big look called environmental assessment and analysis and decision-making, where they're trying to compare their NEPA processes to a bunch of other federal agencies, including a bunch of federal agencies that do really complicated NEPA, and, and trying to see how those other agencies do NEPA faster than, you know, in, in some ways faster or better than the Forest Service does. And the, the kind of the fruits of that process, like that, that big look should, should be rolling out in the next couple, over the next couple of years. They, they are learning some things and they're going to, they, there is at least a lot of, at least a lot of words about leaning forward and making some changes in the way that NEPA is, is done so that they can do better projects, treat more acres within NEPA planning areas, and get the process done, and most importantly, get the process done faster.
And I think you're, you're going to see from the counties all over Oregon especially, that they're going to be pushing hard for their involvement and especially your involvement in that process, and it may take a long time, but I think in the interest of local control, that's got to happen. So thank you, that's all I have for now.
Any other questions? I think I asked all mine while you were doing it, so.
If I could, there was one thing I forgot to mention when, during the presentation. So that we talked a lot about the Good Neighbor, the timber sale type of project, but there is this other, other branch or pathway, these Restoration Services projects, where the Forest Service has funds for, you know, that they, they have funds, but they don't have the capacity, the human resources themselves to get work done. One of the really neat opportunities we're talking with them about right, you know, right now, literally right now, is that they are losing, that they still have funds for sudden oak death work on the Rogue Siskiyou National Forest. They are losing some of the, they're losing some of their, their, you know, human resources that they need to do that work. So they're turning to us and saying, "Well, we could give you these funds that we were going to use to do sudden oak death work, and you have sudden oak death foresters, you know, within your offices within the Westernland District." And those people could manage sudden oak death projects for the foresters on Forest Service land. So that, that's an example of, of, you know, a non-timber-related Good Neighbor Authority project that is, that might be of interest here in Curry County.
Did you have a comment?
Do I, do I understand, or did I hear in the past that some of those would be from the Part-Time Forest Protective Association employees? And in, in some of those projects, is that kind of in the long-term outlook?
It, it sure could be. I mean, I think we're looking at every opportunity. If we need to bring on additional personnel, we're looking at every opportunity, and CFPA is a great, you know, is a great source, and Mike and I have talked. And, and so they're, you know, they're, yes, the answer to that is, it's certainly a possibility.
So for our county, that would, as you well know, that would be just huge.
Well, and, and for, for CFPA and the Department of Forestry, if we, you know, it's one thing for us to offer a four or five-month seasonal firefighter position, but if we've got two months or three months on either end of that, and it starts becoming more full-time employment, that's a really beneficial thing from a fire protection standpoint, because we don't have any seasonal crews on right now, and we've got districts fighting fires. And so having those folks on gives us the ability to go deal with those more easily, and it allows us to keep personnel longer, and, you know, the amount of training we put into people, it helps us, you know, tap into that, that expense and, and effort that we've made to train people up. So it's beneficial all the way around.
I think it's you that kind of taught me a couple of months ago that some of these people are just trained to be firefighters, but sometimes it's really tough for them to make it on four, five months, so that's just really good news. I hope we can help on that down the road.
Any other questions? Did you folks have any more?
No, but I might just, in terms of maybe just kind of closing out, we're, we're proceeding down the path of being engaged in GNA on Chetco salvage, and I know this is a work session and not, decisions are made here necessarily or voiced, but if, if you have questions or concerns, by all means, you've got our cards, let us know, and we'll, we'll definitely be responsive to that. The other thing I might just mention too is that you met Link, you didn't get a chance to really visit with him much, but he sat there pretty quiet, and, and if you knew Link, you'd know that that's not normal for him. But Link is, Link's a, is a great, a great individual, and he, as I said, his, his responsibilities now come down this far in, in our private forest world in particular, and, and so he will be involved in, in some of the GNA stuff over time, and he will be the, he or Ryan Greco, who works for him out of our Coos Bay office, will be kind of the local, more local contact there. But by all means, if you ever have questions or concerns, get ahold of, of Link and/or me.
Council Huddle?
Thank you, and so Mr. Lorenz and again, Mr. Chang and Link, thank you guys for coming. It seems like this is, you know, a federal-state program with some benefits to the county and a, you know, and the county is mainly a recipient or passive. Is there a role for the county to play in any of this process? You know, putting aside whether we would participate in any kind of NEPA comments, is there anything the county can do to support this program or participate in the program, or what can we do to help, I suppose, is a, is a question, if, if anything?
What I would, what I would say from my perspective is we're, this is new stuff to us, on the West Side in particular, and we're feeling it out as we go along. In my mind, I think this whole thing is, is about partnership and about doing what's right for the land and the forest and for the communities. And if there's a, you know, if there's a way that the county wants to engage and/or we see a way for the county to engage, we, you know, we'll certainly entertain that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to mention a very nuts and bolts kind of potential opportunity. So I've described how Good Neighbor, you know, under Good Neighbor Authority, there's program income, Good Neighbor Authority timber sales, there's program income generated, and we can use that to do various kinds of work, including road construction and reconstruction, and that doesn't mean that all of that work has to be done by ODF. So you could imagine situations where there's, there's roadwork that needs to be subcontracted essentially to make a, you know, to be able to do a project where partnering with the County Public Works Department would be just as, you know, just as good of an option as, you know, hiring some local, you know, cat operator or something like that. So there's, there are actually some, you know, if you think about it, there are some, you know, potential opportunities to partner, you know, for the, the county to play more roles in the, in the active management of the federal forests as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Good information.
Thank you.
I even took a half page of notes.
Now you've seen you out of a uniform, yeah. Great job. There is hope.
Okay, next we'll be going to the Road Fund Loan Ordinance. Council Huddle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, in the, in your packet, this starts on page eight and goes through page 14.
Let's see, Phil.
And the AGRS says if this item was moved from a May 2nd General Meeting to a May 9th Workshop, and essentially this item has been discussed. There's a memo from John Hitt. It talks about the House Bill granting local governing body authority to lend to other governing agencies, and it lists the types, monies from federal sources in the County Road Fund of Curry, Clamath, and Yam Hill. And it says the limitation is it cannot exceed debt service abilities of the receiving district and cannot exceed 20 years. Curry County, now this says it has a, the memo says we have approximately 30 million. I've heard that number is subject to debate, perhaps lower, but again, somewhere around there, it says approximately. And then there's a description that we're earning approximately 1.6% return on that. And it says it's not known, you know, the source of those funds, and then which, which sources. We have federal, state, and local funds contributing to the road fund. It hasn't been parsed out as to which funds are which. And then, then it says there's other Curry governmental agencies, other agencies in this county that are either in need of long-term funding or have existing long-term loans at relatively high rates of interest. And then the attached ordinance could provide a means to provide some form of, you know, debt relief, restructuring, et cetera, to those agencies in need of funds, or with existing high-interest indebtedness. Says any funds actually lent out would be paid back to the County Road Fund. Interest accruals in excess of what we currently earn, that's, would be per an agreement, and then excess earnings could be allocated to the county's general fund. I suppose, that's, that's something that I would have to look at. I don't, I don't know what the basis of that statement is. I, I, I think, again, there's, I think there's arguments both ways on that, that it should all go to the road fund. But again, we'd, we'd have to, we'd have to double-check. And what they're talking about there is the difference between what we're currently investing our road fund in, the 1.6% and whatever interest we charge, if we were replenishing our road fund by the amount of capital plus the 1.6, I think the premise here is that anything above that wouldn't need to go to the road fund, but I, I, again, I haven't, I haven't vetted that proposition, so I wouldn't want the board in making its action to rely on, on that statement. And then it just says the proposed ordinance could be referred to the voters for approval or rejection. And the memo says there's options, take no action. I think if you, if you took no action, then we would still have the state law on the books allowing us to, to make these road fund loans, but we wouldn't have any internal guidance other than on an ad hoc basis and, and the limited restrictions and instructions in the statute and directions in there. Two would be approve the proposed ordinance with or without amendment, and then three, if the ordinance is approved, make the effective date dependent on approval by the voters, and that's a, those are options. And then the recommendation from John Hitt was to adopt with or without amendment, and he had no recommendation regarding possible referral to the voters. And then on page 11, the ordinance talks about the county ordinance, and this is a draft, it would be reformatted and codified. And it's called an application for loans from County Road Fund Reserves. And then it says, "Any Curry County governmental entity requesting a road fund loan shall do so in writing, indicating as a minimum the amount requested, the purpose of the loan, the requested term and interest rate of the loan, copies of audited financial reports for prior five fiscal years, copies of loan documents for any current or pending loan." And then the applying governmentality must, entity, excuse me, must be able to demonstrate that they have, that they're, they, I think it's, it's either "there have been no loan defaults" or "they have no loan defaults." It looks like it needs a little bit of a wording there, "in the prior five fiscal years." And then it just says, "The public entity requesting must have, must qualify for independently certified bond rating of triple B plus or A minus two from standard and pores, or an equivalent rating from another nationally-recognized bond rating agency." And it says, "Or the entity requesting the loan must obtain and pay the required premium to ensure the principal of the loan for the entire period of the loan. Said insurance shall be provided by AMBAC Assured Guaranty or other nationally-recognized municipal bond insurer. The applying agency shall secure road fund loan by general obligation of the borrowing entity. The borrowing entity must have unencumbered and annual tax revenue in excess of 115% of the total debt service required to timely meet the requirements of the repayment of principal and interest resulting from any road fund loan." And if, if I read that in the reverse, then taxing entity can only borrow, you know, a less than a percentage, and I don't know the exact inverse of 115%, but a, a, an entity can only borrow less than whatever they have left that would make 115% of the total debt service. And then the borrowing entity shall maintain a road fund loan sinking fund reserve in a separate escrow, escrow account equal to at least 7.5% of the remaining principal owed. And then it has loan underwriting limitations. No loan or combination of loan balances outstanding may exceed 25% of the total road fund. No loans shall have a repayment term of more than 10 years." So we've, we've taken the permissible 20 under the state law and reduced it to 10. All, all loans shall be fully amortized over the life of the loan, principal and interest payments made quarterly. Minimum interest rate on road fund loans shall exceed the current state-of-Oregon governmental intermediate fund rate by 3% or more at the time of loan funding. So it's, I guess if we are getting the 1.6 as a intermediate fund rate, then 3%, so we'd ask for at least 4, 4.6% at the time of the loan funding. And it seems like that could also be made variable, so it could just, not just be at funding if it was fixed. I think it might be at the time of funding, that's something to think about. But it says a minimum, so I think a, a variable would satisfy the minimum, and that could be established in the loan document. Loan approval process: Prior to approval of any road fund loan request, a board of commissioners shall conduct two separate public hearings separated by at least 30 days. Said public hearings shall be noticed in all newspapers of record and the county website at least 21 days prior to each public hearing. At least one public hearing shall be conducted in a location other than Gold Beach. And then it says, "The BOC shall take a vote. After each public hearing, the BOC shall cast unanimous vote favoring the loan proposal before moving forward with or otherwise approving the loan request. Failure to obtain a unanimous vote after either public hearing or after review of the final loan documents shall result in denial, disapproval of loan request." And this says, "The BOC shall not grant final loan approval until all underwriting requirements as contained herein are met. All loan documents are prepared and the loan request formally approved by the loan applicant at a public meeting of the applicant's governing board." So that's the extent of the document. For me, I, you know, it says, "Shall not grant the loan until all underwriting requirements contained herein are met." And then it says, "All loan documents are prepared." When I, I did not do bond counsel where I came from, we had a separate bond counsel who prepared all the bond documents. I'm not sure who it's anticipated would prepare the loan documents. And then, and then the loan request has to be formally approved by the applicant at a public meeting of the applicant's governing board. So, so those are the steps. So, so those are the steps. It, I'm not sure if it's contained somewhere else. It talked about long-term lending. I'm assuming that these loans would be for capital. But I, I'm just assuming that. I don't know that I, that I read that word during the presentation here. But it does mention long-term, and usually that's what you have that for. So that's, really, that's, that's all I had unless there's questions of the board.
Commissioner Huxley.
I, I reviewed this and also looked at the documents that were submitted. And all were originated by former interim administrator. I did not see, and I think that I'm, I'm correct in just your comments, that you really had not, I didn't see any input in the documents by, by county council. You know, and, and I'm taking just the way that it's been discussed here, that you had no comments back. In other words, this has just been a pass-through from something over the last three months that the prior administrator had done. I, I saw nothing with suggestions from you. And it was almost like it was the first time you'd reviewed it. I don't know. That's just the way it came across. There were, there were no reference to, and I think you were quick to say, you know, that this is not in the format, that it would be appropriate. And I agree for the, for the board just to proceed and give direction to finalize this thing. The time, we, we had recent discussions on road fund, you know, use of road funds. The times, if you go to chapter two ninety-four on investment practices from municipalities, which we've discussed in prior workshops certainly on this topic. You have two ninety-four oh thirty-five, one forty-five, I think one fifty-five. Yeah, one forty-five and one fifty-five, where their reference has to be made to some of that because they are far more strict in the times to lock up money than this. That the original, some of the original graphs on, on this topic were for five years, which was still over three times longer than those normally permitted for municipalities to invest their funds, period. So I think it, while I'm, I'm, I've always been supportive of the concept. I think really, we, we're, we're looking at something that sort of, not much has happened over the last three months.
So what you're saying is we need to look more closely at the ORS's in order to form this?
I'm saying, you know, should certainly look at them, yes. And all of a sudden, you know, we, we, recent comment, well, as of, what's today, Wednesday? As of Monday, we were talking about what ifs. If you use these many road funds, you know, how many years? And you don't have any left. And all of a sudden, we have something in here that's saying, but you can lend out up to twenty-five or thirty-five. I'm not sure that's gone back and forth of the total funds up to ten years. Well, you know, if, if you loan out a whole, a lot of, of those funds and you lock them up and something does go south or you do have bridges that you need repair, et cetera, et cetera. You're, you're, you may be, have a great net asset value, but your cash flow is, is zip. You don't have the available liquid cash. So certainly not ten years. You don't wanna, I would not support locking anything up for, for ten years.
Commissioner Boyce?
Those are my comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. House Bill thirty-four thirty-five, it went through rigorous legislative council at Salem. It was passed unanimously. I might, might have been one in the Senate, a couple in the House didn't vote or maybe even voted against this. But this passed a serious legislative and legal review. So it was done for the counties of, as you know, Curry, Clamath, and Yam Hill. So it's not that complicated. This is representative government. We can simply, you know, we have a lame duck board here. There's only gonna be in operation another six months. I don't think we need, what I would prefer today, Madam Chair, is to just take no action. As far as council not changing anything, there's fourteen paragraphs here. That this is, our county staff has spent, spent a considerable amount of time. You could spend, the way this is legally written, you could spend maybe a half a day on each one of these paragraphs. I don't think they have the time to do that. I certainly don't think it's necessary. So if, if any of our taxing districts wanted to come and take a look at this process, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't want to speak for you, Council Huddle, but yeah, we could spend so much time on this. But the taxing districts, if they were to come and look at thirty-four thirty-five as it's written, for the benefit of this county and to others, they might come in with some optimism to proceed. If they look at what the county's requirements are, not to mention taking it before the voters, when that's our job to make the tough calls and tough decisions. I think with the extent, they might look at this and go, why bother? That's my, my personal view.
Commissioner Huxley?
The, 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 as was legislated, that, that allows to loan up to twenty years. That's, that's not what you want to do with, with the road funds.
We're trying to help our taxing districts, sir, to have that option.
Can I finish my comment?
Yes, certainly.
I absolutely suggest that we proceed, you know, we're not here to make decisions, but we can direct staff to proceed on a more thorough review just utilizing some of the comments here so that we can get a draft back. Because I think something needs to be passed to put some viable restrictions on the use of these funds and put this after that. If we get that draft portion, then to proceed as I'm, to put this before the voters to hear what the voters have to say too.
Well, I feel very strong, I feel very strongly that we need to have some sort of stipulations and process for anybody to come and even apply for a loan. I think that's important because we need to be very protective of our, our road fund. So I think, I think it's necessary to have an ordinance. So that's my feeling. Commissioner Boyce?
No.
Council Huddle?
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair. And so, right, I, I did simply put on this workshop the documents prepared by county administrator Hitt that had been submitted for the May second business meeting. And I didn't explain what input I had in this prior. Early on, I, I did talk to county administrator Hitt about some thoughts I had on it. Some of those thoughts were, were incorporated. And mainly those thoughts looked at the ORS requirements for investing of government money. And then in the statutes that are referred to, because the, the House bill refers to, it says notwithstanding ORS two ninety-four oh six oh, two ninety-four four six eight, and three sixty-eight seven oh five. And two ninety-four oh six oh is in the local budget law, local municipal finance law. And then two ninety-four four six eight is also there. And two ninety-four four six eight talks about inter-fund loans among counties, and it has a ten-year limitation on those. And it allows for both a capital and an operational lending inter-fund. And I believe three sixty-eight seven oh five, it's, it's been a while, and it has been a while. I did not prepare, I didn't go back over my notes and really prepare and look at what I had said and compare them to my comments and compare them to the draft here. But my recollection was the draft included a lot of the things that were in my comments. And then the questions that I asked here are kind of the questions I asked back then. Who would be preparing these loan documents? You know, how, how would those happen? And whether we would use outside, outside counsel for that? And to do, you know, the underwriting analysis? Would we just be, you know, reviewing the application from a staff point of view? Would we, would, you know, have someone examine it? I, I think the people would have, the applicants would have ratings. So those are just some, some, I think, more or less nuts and bolts procedural questions. But, you know, the statute says that the amount of loan determine the rate of, the rate of interest may not be less than the average for return. I'm just trying to see if there's a way. And then one question would be if I had, if we could put any, any money above the state return to the general fund versus back to the road fund. It seems like if you, and maybe there's limits on what you can invest the road fund in, but it seems like if, if you're investing a road fund into something, it would seem like the return on, on that would go back to the road fund. So I just, I'd want to check that out. That's, that's a concept I don't recall discussing prior. So, but really, it, it's up to the board. If, if you did want more work done based on the comments here, I'm assuming I would be the staff and perhaps the new county administrator and the finance director would be the staff working on this some more. But what, what are the, the main, you said based on the comments here today, what are some of the main areas of this proposed ordinance that the board wants more information about or wants, wants to know more about?
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. This bill is the best way, I think, one of the best ways to protect the road fund reserves and serve our county. We're hit everywhere there is to be hit, and this is, I don't want to see this opportunity passed up. However, if, as I said a minute ago, this should be, I don't want to take any action then because I think we need to defer this to the next board. And if in fact, we get a taxing district come to us based on House Bill thirty-four thirty-five, we can delay it or take action then. I am very much opposed to staff spending any more or additional time on this in the, on this with what we're faced with right now. So I'm, I'm asking to take no action on this.
Commissioner Huxley?
I ask, and I think based on the chair's comments, we're in agreement that something needs to move forward. That I, I think just in the comments that initially as county council went over, certainly from, you know, points of where the investment comes back to. You know, if it's, if it's road fund loan, does it, I think it should, but it's, you know, verification of things that he had reviewed as he went through this. You know, where does it go back? Go back to reference to some of the appropriate sections of chapter two ninety-four for investment of municipal funds. Look at the, look at the times, you know, the length of the funds. And he's also addressed a good, you know, certainly an important point. Who would create those documents?
Who would pay for the creation?
And pay for the creation, which is part of, you know, the, the things to be recouped just as a, a lending institution has those costs, you know, associated G and A type costs that need to be recouped. And what may and may not be an allowed interest rate above, you know, a particular current rate now being received by the county. It, you know, it's, and, and not to get it locked in to where it, have it vary, just as so many do over prime, it's X number, you know.
Or have a minimum.
Or something to, to float and adjust accordingly. Basically, a variable loan based on the, on the current rate of return of those, of those, of those funds.
But not to go below a certain level, a minimum.
But that would just be to look at the, the proper language. I think that, that pretty much touched on most of, certainly of what county council had.
County council?
Pursue that.
There was one other idea. And sometimes if there's a, for instance, a construction loan, and there is a mention of an escrow account in here. But if, if, let's say, an entity, and, and I, and I think that some of the common ideas here are to refinance existing debt and improve their financial picture. But if it was a construction loan for capital, a lot of times, you know, that money is also held by the lending institution and the, and the funds are distributed when progress is completed and, and things like that. You don't just, you know, give someone else, the person doing the project, the money. So there are some certain, some certain mechanisms that could be put in place. Those can be done on agreement by agreement basis. But certainly, I think, having some expert, I mean, we're, I'm assuming we're talking large amounts of dollars here, at least, you know, it says twenty-five percent of our road funds. So if our road funds, let's just say thirty million, twenty-five percent of that is, again, I'm not good at math, but seven or eight thousand dollars.
Seven and a half.
Yeah, so there's seven or eight million dollars. So that's, that's something that, you know, having, having experts versed in lending documentation and remedies and stuff makes, makes a lot of sense to get involved. And again, that's a cost. So are those, those are the kind of questions the board would like to see worked on.
Yes, please.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. Is, and Commissioner Boyce has expressed a willingness to have this come back probably after the first of the year, which would give six months. Is, is there any, and we don't, I have, I'm not aware, I'm not gonna say we don't, but I'm not aware that any particular entities have come to the board and asked for one of these type of loans allowed under the House bill. What's the sense of the board on prioritizing bringing this back? Just as from counsel, I have a land use board of appeals, appeal that I have to work on. I have three lawsuits for remediation of nuisances that I'm working on. And I'm working on the warehouser litigation on the livestock district. So all of those things will be coming up for me in the next six months. And in addition to just the general legal work, contractor view, personnel matters, those kind of things.
You don't get any daily interruptions, do you?
But, you know, it's quite a grab bag. But, but from my point of view, it, it, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have this come back in six months. But, or, or if it's when I, when I have done the work on it, I can work it in in my usual schedule. Hopefully, that would be a quicker than six-month turnaround. But what's the board's sense on that?
Commissioner Huxley?
I, I would like to bring it back certainly much quicker than six months. And I think, given the daily, you know, what's occurred in your, in your schedule over the last three years, I think that's quite doable.
Let me, let me ask a follow-up to that if I could. There was also some sentiment to put the ordinance to the voters. I, I don't, I, I felt like Commissioner Huxley, you said that, and I don't know if Commissioner Gold kind of supported that or not. I mean, we're not, it's not a direct order or anything. But is the, is the idea to have this to be on a ballot in November? Are we working back from the timelines for submitting things to ballots? What's the, what's, is that a goal of the board or what is happening there?
Commissioner Huxley?
I think that's been a goal and it's been a stated goal for the last four or five months to do that. Absolutely.
Commissioner Boyce?
No, is that your opinion also that needs to, this, the option?
Let me state my opinion. If we were to have the public hearings part of it, then I think that would cover it, to be honest with you. I don't think it necessarily has to go before the voters.
Thank you.
But I am strongly in favor of coming up with a, a policy that gives direction as to how loans are given out. And I wouldn't want to give any loans out until a policy is in place.
Yeah, based on, unless somebody knows of any taxing districts that have come before us, even potentially one from another county. If it's true that we have had no interest, then why would we spend the time right now with, with all we're dealing with? That's just my opinion.
Any other opinions? Okay, so where do we go from here? What's the question?
I would say for consensus of the majority of the board for direction with the, basically of the goal of completing an ordinance. Not that we would put something to the voters, but with that timeframe to work back to, which is still, I think, very doable. The, the, the major portion is, is, you know, that's a fixed calendar. And we can see what that last date is, work backwards. And to have the, the ordinance in, in place without a calendar, I'm gonna guess that it would probably be in the next three months approximately, without looking at the final. probably be in the next three months approximately, without looking at the final ballot calendar for November.
So is that doable? Council Huddle?
I will do it as best as I can, and if the board, I'll try to give the board updates on it, so in the next few months. So I can certainly, I think I can answer, if I'm understanding it, can we have the investment money come back other than the road fund is one question. Review the ORS Chapter 294 for times and lengths of investments. And I did that briefly, and for inter-fund loans, it allows a 10-year look back. This statute says notwithstanding that, you can go 20, but our board, our draft says 10, sticking with what's in 294. Who would create the documents and who would pay for the document creation? I think that's something I would just do some industry inquiries. And then the allowed interest rate, I don't know how the administrator arrived at 3%. I think it was trying to lower the interest somewhere between what the other districts are paying and the 1.6 we're getting. So I think that, and when I read the statutes, it says the board can set whatever interest they want. Certainly can't be exerious and excessive interest and predatory lending and those kind of things. So I would look at those three questions. I think that's something I could do within that timeframe.
And maybe one other thing you could put in there. I think the interest rate should be based on the creditworthiness of the individual applying or entity applying. Because we're not a bank. If they can't get a loan from a bank, then --
That's --
I'm sorry, but we have to be protective of the county's money. Yes.
I think that's, as far as the credit ratings, I think that's addressed.
Okay.
In the draft at this point. It's, you have to be creditworthy in order to be even considered for applying. We're not after assuming a lot of potential bad debts at the expense of road funds.
Commissioner Boyce?
If we really make a bad debt, then the county's in worse trouble than we are right now. So ironclad, if 10 or 20 years pledged security isn't enough, then I don't know how you'd do any better than that, the money that they would be taking in. So I just, I'm just going to lobby you to the best I can that, let's not make it so complicated, nobody's even going to bother to knock at the door. And we lose other opportunities to help the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Huxley?
Are we clear, Ben, based on what's been discussed? Or is county council clear?
That I will be working on answering the questions that we described and getting that back to you in a reasonable amount of time. Not quite as quick as possible, but that I will work it into what I'm doing currently versus wait until later. So, thank you.
More like three months, maybe?
Maybe sooner, I think, which is a limited amount of questions. And then, you know, if there's more, we'll just cross that bridge and we'll come to it.
A 50-page document.
No, I agree.
It's a two or a three page.
Yep, I agree. Should be able to get it back in a reasonable time.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, this workshop is dismissed.
Thank you. Adjourned.
Adjourned, sorry. I didn't, you know, I was thinking of this courtroom, sorry.
I can see you recessing it.